We're not paying for two people.
Yes, we are.
We have to, we're doing it in stereo tonight.
Just wanted to see you at work.
Come and sit down and watch how well it works.
Come on.
We're good?
One second.
We have to have two, we're doing it in stereo tonight.
Let's go back to the Monovis keeper.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectments Meeting for September 10th, 2015. First item on the agenda, salute to the flyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Move that we approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? Approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Seconded. All in favor?
Gentlemen.
What?
I need you to approve the September 3rd and September 9th minutes. Remember, we had that emergency meeting. And did anybody read the September 3rd minutes?
I glanced through it, I didn't.
Because there were four or five seconds left out. I've since corrected them, but the ones I sent you were missing.
Who was president at those meetings?
You both were, yes.
All of us, okay. So what's the dates?
September 3rd and September 9th.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of September 3rd?
And 9th, there you go.
Well, yeah, we do both. Make a motion.
Yeah, I move that we approve those minutes.
Of September 3rd and September 9th?
Of September 3rd and September 9th.
Seconded. All in favor? All right. Department head, committee chair, updates.
All right, tonight, going to start off with Steve from TPD. Be so kind to take the podium. We have one last document that needs to be signed. This is the Design Build Amendment. He's going to talk about the site plan. Brad has reviewed all of these documents. There was a couple of changes that he requested that have been put in here. So everything, the way they stand now are approved by, by the town's attorney. He'll talk to you separately about the site plan. But as far as this, there are two copies, and you're going to be signing on page 11. There's a place for all three of you to sign. And you reviewed this earlier. This was the original contract with the two addendums that Brad recommended, and I think that you guys recommended one.
So both, both, there's two parts to the contract. Both parts were previously reviewed by the town and the town attorney a month or two ago, whenever it was when we first signed the first part.
Right.
That first part allowed us to complete the design. This second part allows us to build the building, which is what we need at this point.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then I also have the engineered site and building drawings that Ken has also reviewed.
And we have a building permit to sign, so I'm assuming he's already approved it?
Yeah, an application to sign.
An application? Oh, okay. So you're not to that stage to approve a building permit yet?
Yeah, we approved it, yeah, and just haven't, haven't picked it up yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to do so after the meeting.
So are those copies for us?
No, I've already given two copies to...
Okay. Great.
One copy to Jennifer, one copy to Ken. And then this is my copy that I was going to ask the selectmen to sign off on.
And my copy went to the road commissioners. They both came up yesterday afternoon and reviewed the plans, and additionally, I checked with Ken as well.
Okay. We're all good on these, Ken? It's okay to sign?
They need to know what's in it.
Okay.
So we'll sign off on the final.
Oh, okay.
Make a motion to sign the contract.
Go ahead.
No. Okay. All in favor? You said two places?
There's two different documents, yeah.
Oh, two different documents.
They're identical, probably, because of the town.
Okay. Want to make a motion to sign that site plan?
I move that we approve the site plan.
Seconded.
It's also the building permits.
The building, what?
It's the site plan and then the building plans.
Oh.
That's the site plan.
Motion for the building plans, to sign the building plans?
I move that we sign the building plans.
Seconded. All in favor? Just on the notice, I'll sign here.
Make sure you date it, Ken.
It is. I don't see a place to date.
Sorry, I just thought of that.
No, it was just the math, we're talking about that one.
That's like this, I'm signing.
It's on, all right. Did the issue get screened out as far as the setbacks and whatnot?
They went off their survey, yeah. The line pro showed up this morning, they finished up the survey. They set stakes for us, done the other one, we actually gained about 10 feet more than we thought we had.
Right. So what's on here is correct with the additional room?
It's, it's actually more.
Okay.
What we've done is, this line is actually, it's actually going right through halfway through this concrete pad.
Okay.
So what we've done is we've just maintained our line that they gave us, it would stay here and stay here. We maintain that line, so it's still, you know, the building's still staying where it is. We don't want it to approach any more than we're at.
Right.
We've actually gained property.
Go ahead. Before line pro came, this line was what down?
It was down. This line right here is what I approximately...
Yep.
When I, when I, it was ribbons, you know, I measured off the 500 feet, I came up with this line.
Okay.
And then after they came into the survey, they found that the line was actually further than we thought, so...
So we're setting way, we're no problem with that, we're setting way back from where?
We're a lot better than where we're at.
Okay. Great. You got to sign those two.
David, do you have the town copies?
The ones they gave me yesterday?
Yeah.
I got them from the truck.
Well, I'm thinking, if they're going to leave with the signed copy, I'd like the town to have a signed copy on file as well.
You want me to grab it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have them handy?
Yeah.
In the meantime, Steve, you can sign the copies of this. Anything typically that the selectmen sign, we try to keep a record of, so I'd like to have you sign off on one copy.
I can sign off on that copy, make a full copy of mine, your copy.
You need to go back to the, back and come back?
Whatever you want, yeah. We'll just sign the other set, and then you don't have to come back.
Right.
Sure.
Have you spoken to the treasurer at all in regards to payments and how they're handled in the form that the bank wanted?
I have not spoken to him.
Okay. I'll have her touch base with you tomorrow.
There's one more sheet from the side.
Thanks, David.
Want to bring them up to you?
Thank you. And you can't drop these in the mud on the job site.
Perfect. Thank you. Yep.
Dan, this is our permanent copy for the record, so you can't drop these in the mud here.
Yeah, I'm going to give you a value.
I got a funny feeling they're going to look a lot worse.
Well, I can take them, we can take them over to Zippy and get a copy, if you need a copy for the, because I'd like to have something on file here.
Yes.
Is it something that you can do the weekend without, or no?
I need a little more money. Well, try to keep them out of the ring. We have a copy that you can all sign off on.
Perfect.
Or we'll give, maybe we can give him his set.
We'll work it out. We'll have one set signed.
One for you and one for me.
Ken, is that something you want to keep a copy of in your office as well?
I have my own set.
In addition to the one that he gave you?
I have the seven eight.
Okay. And that's something you want to keep a copy in your office?
Talked to Joe Stanley this morning from Line Pro after they set the stakes, and I asked him to give us a price, and I actually set some steel pins on the property lines. Mark is, because there's none there now. So he will be sending, I asked him to send Ken an actual survey, plot plan, the whole area, so we've got it on record.
Okay.
But he's going to give us a price for doing the additional stuff later on down the road.
Can you just pull your mics close, we've got a call in there, I don't know if you can hear you at the table? Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us?
You want me to sign your copy?
Oh, yes, please. Sorry. Was there another page we were supposed to sign on that?
No, just him.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any idea when you're starting?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning?
Foundation work.
Foundation? Okay. And any update on the arches?
I have not received a confirmed delivery date yet.
Oh, okay.
But it should be the beginning of October.
But they are working on them already?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great, that's great. Thanks a lot. Fire rescue merger?
You have one last question. As far as the color of the metal panels, I'll have a color chart for that. Who should I go to to pick the color of the panels?
Want to bring it into the board and let them decide with the road commissioners?
Yeah.
Unless you have purple, we could just do purple then.
Well, I've noticed purple as a theme color, but I don't have purple.
We'll let them decide then.
Okay.
All right, thanks a lot. Okay.
Fire rescue merger, Jennifer.
So I found a little bit of additional information that might be helpful to you. We, I talked to Tammy Higgins at the billing agency to figure out how this can best go forward as quickly as possible. Once we get the application for Main Care Medicare submitted, then we'll be able to sign, you, the town could acquire the associations.
Assets.
Yeah. So, but if we did that now, you legally could do that, but it would interrupt everything that's in place, and I, it would...
The ambulance would have to stop.
The ambulance, well, you could run, but you couldn't bill for it.
Okay.
You would not be able to back bill, and you couldn't charge now.
And we couldn't back bill. Okay, so then we shouldn't do that.
No. I checked on the NPI number last night, and as of last night, it was still pending. Once we get that, Tammy's going to make time to help me get the two applications for Main Care Medicare in. I've also been making phone calls, talking, leaving messages to get other agencies' input on how, what policies they've implemented, how they operate, what best practices could be, to get input from that. So I hope within the next two weeks to have a little bit more information for you. And I've been just working on reading as much as I can to get up to speed on what the expectations are, what the, all these acronyms mean, and then helping to try to look to see where we go as far as filing, where it's going to be, how it is, and just maybe a little reorganization for accessible, easier accessibility.
And we were able to schedule the meeting with the fire chief, Jennifer, and Ed, and Jen Seer, next Wednesday at 6:30 at the fire department, so that's been scheduled. So you want to try to get all of your questions or anything you're thinking of, you know, ahead of time, all written down in advance, so that Ed can make sure that all of your concerns get addressed.
Well, I think what would be good is if I shoot, I think we could brainstorm, send out an email ahead of time, so she can maybe, we can brainstorm. If she has questions too, we can work together as a team to work on what will be the best benefit to the citizens and to Acton.
Yeah, I'm not sure that she, I had a fairly lengthy conversation with her and without getting into too much detail. You know, I think that she may be wondering where it's going forward and what her role is going forward, but as far as the consolidation, I mean, she doesn't really have any questions for you. She's, she's ready to answer yours. So put together whatever you have.
Okay.
And what we think we can, you know, take from there. I did mention little things like the filing cabinet, we wanted to kind of see, you know, how they, how they did certain things, and she mentioned HIPAA laws, and I said, no, no, you're, you know, you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. We want to look at just the, the system and the filing, we don't want to see what's in it. So I think that, you know, it's going to be all about approach, and so if you can just write them down in advance, so that, you know, maybe even let Ed take a look at those, you can go in with a plan.
Sounds good.
Is Bill Catanji going to be there too?
Uh, no. When we had the meeting, he wasn't, it wasn't mentioned that he needed to be.
Well, he's the president of the association.
So Peter, do you want to put out an invitation to him? See if he wants to join you?
Thanks so much for all the work you're doing.
Is there anything you need from me?
Do you have a sense yet on how many hours we would have to have somebody working for this job that you're doing now?
Well, I think it's going to depend on what the expectations are. If, if the person that's in the position just, I think it's going to depend on once, what the, the selectmen decide how they want things to be done.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Town report? No, I don't have it yet.
We actually skipped over the building permit signature you guys didn't actually sign. So the building permit application for the San and Salt Shed, we had Mr. Dumont fill out, but Ken needed either a letter of authorization from the town or a signature from the selectmen.
Just sign on to you, Ken? Whoop, he's gone.
Just by the X there, isn't there a...
Right here.
Yeah.
A motion to sign the building permit?
I move that we sign the building permit.
Seconded. Town report?
Town report? I'm still missing the Board of Selectmen's report, Saco River Quarter, Acton Rec, and the auditor report. Notice that list is a little smaller from last week, I got a couple of them in.
Okay. On the auditor's report, so we wouldn't have a figure for Undesignated Fund yet, right?
I do have that figure for Undesignated Fund.
Get to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ken, Bill, I had mentioned to you reaching out to Acton Rec. Have any luck with that?
I ended up talking to his wife, she was around.
Okay. Saco River Quarter is not really a big deal. You know, we can submit without that one, it's, it's optional.
Don't we still have, we haven't put anybody on that from the town? I remember last year, we kept trying to get somebody to put on, because the two members that we had before...
Yeah, we may not have members, but they still serve Acton, I mean, we don't...
Well, I mean, if we did, we could have that member, talk to him.
Right. So what will we do about the selectmen's report?
I will do it. That's B.
I know.
I don't know how I got picked, but I did, so...
Because you're the chair, that's one of the things that comes, that comes along with being the chair.
No, 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 it doesn't, because Bill did it last year, or the year before.
Actually, Bill didn't do it last year.
Oh.
And I don't think you did it the year before that.
So it's the office manager, so...
No, it absolutely is not. All right, moving on. The flag waivers quote, you guys approved this last week, but we didn't get any initials, and my treasurer likes to have anything's initialed, so if you could just circle option...
You just want to initial it anywhere.
Circle, well, if you circle option B, which was what the motion was, maybe you could sign next to that.
Which cemetery has the stone missing?
Did you read the whole email?
Yeah.
I don't think that it says.
No, it didn't.
Some of the key things that, you know, that you want to point out in this email, do you want to read it?
Sure.
Good morning, gentlemen. Hannah Phillips, on behalf of the Conservation Committee, contacted me this week and has a headstone that needs replaced for a veteran in the Town of Acton. She was initially going to have it repaired as it was broken in half, however, when she went out with the gentleman that does the repairs to get a quote, she found that the stone had been taken. She asked if she could use the money that the town appropriated for veterans cemetery maintenance to order a new stone and have it erected. She got a quote on the stone of $1,000 with all the lettering included. We have appropriated $2,750 for the veterans' cemeteries, which was to include lawn care and maintenance for those veterans' grave sites, as well as flags and markers. Flags and markers tend to cost approximately $500 a year. We have not set a plan for lawn care as of yet. In reserve funds, the Conservation Committee and the Veterans Funds carry over from year to year, and we have 1,355 combined in those reserve funds. It would be my suggestion that this stone be ordered to comply with state and federal law. She also mentioned that there are other graves that do not have stones at all and never have. I would suggest getting a list of those sites and planning for future purchases in the budget years ahead. Hannah is not able to attend this selectmen's meeting, so I told her I would pass along the information to you three and ask for permission to purchase the stone from the funds that are available. If you could discuss it at your meeting tonight and relay your decision to me, I will contact her and let her know. Somebody want to make a motion, so we can discuss it?
I move that we accept Hannah's price for replacing the headstone.
It's $1,000, I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion, she's mentioning two other stones that are not there. Do we know that they're veterans?
I mean, I would imagine she only...
Or do we know who they are?
No. Ms. Phillips came into the office and had some concerns. She had some concerns with her accounts and money and how or who was going to tell her how she could spend them.
Okay.
I got her on the phone, Michelle, hoping that she might be able to smooth the situation over a little bit. She, no, we don't have a lot of information, and, and just like for the Conservation Committee, remember, we're, we're still trying to put together information for the veterans in town. I mean, we need somebody that wants to volunteer their time to do this, to, you know, we need to know every veteran in town, where they're located. We've reached out to the Conservation Committee. Mr. Hamm and Mr. Maloney have both said to me, we have some stuff here, there. We have nothing compiled, so even though, I mean, we've got this money set aside to, for lawn care, but we don't know...
We can't do lawn care until we know where the veterans are.
So, I mean, and we've talked about this a couple of times. Who's the liaison for conservation? Bill.
Think it's Bill.
Yep.
I mean, we're, we're not meeting state statute by not maintaining these graves. We have to come up with a plan, even if we maybe advertise it or start asking everybody that comes in the front door. I mean, people must know if they have a cemetery on their property, if there's a, you know...
You have to have a veteran.
We need to...
Maybe we put a sign up in the office, and we'll keep mentioning it here.
Okay.
And all in favor of spending the $1,000? Town report, quotes?
We reached out to four or different, four different companies. First of all was Lincoln Press for $500. They gave us a price of $3,892. Edison Press, we contacted them, they're locally out of Sanford. They wanted to know what we, what we paid last year when we told them. They replied in an email saying, thanks for asking us to quote the project. Unfortunately, we don't feel like we're going to be anywhere near competitive, and basically, they're not even going to bother. The next one is Greg Madden Printing Company. This is who we used last year for the same 515.95 plus UPS charges. And then the last one, we reached out to Shapley and Alfred, who they use, a company by the name of Cardinal Printing, their total price delivered was 1,834. So the company that we used last year, that we haven't had any concerns with, still with printing, I mean, with delivery, will still be cheaper.
So do you think that the 1,895 is less than the 1,595 is going to be once we get the UPS prices on top? Because those boxes are heavy, and we get a lot of them, right?
Yeah, I would say it would be pretty close. I can't imagine it would be $200 worth, but...
Okay.
We can ask, and the other, the other option is that in the past, we've gone and picked them up.
Oh.
And I can check on printing.
Okay, so we can keep it at the 1,595 if we pick them up?
If somebody wanted to go pick them up.
Where are they?
Somewhere on the other side of Portland, if I recall. But I can find out how much printing is. I mean, at this point, we don't have all of our reports, so we can certainly put off deciding.
Are you happy with the company you worked with last year?
Yep. We've, we send them one electronic document and PDF. We've used them for the last three or four years, I'm no, had no problems.
Anybody want to make a motion, or you want more information?
I'm happy. I'll make a motion, and we go with Madden, same company we've used the last few years for 1,595, plus shipping if we need to.
Go ahead.
All in favor? General Assistance Ordinance Updates.
State of Maine has notified us that there are some changes to general assistance. These just came in. We've essentially just printed the requirements, we're going to start, start advertising it. With your permission, I've set the town meeting, or the, excuse me, the public hearing for Thursday, October 1st. Give you a couple of weeks to really have a chance to review them, and also let the public review them, but it, it changes the allowances based on income and how many are in the, in the house based on our county. So they'll be posted, and hopefully you'll have some time to look at it, but I'm really just looking for you to approve the October 1st date, so I can advertise the public hearing.
A motion?
I wasn't...
Approve the date for the public hearing for the...
I move that we approve the date of October 1st for the...
General Assistance.
General Assistance update.
Seconded. All in favor?
Six o'clock work.
Mm-hmm. Is it going down again? They getting less, or is it going up?
I honestly haven't reviewed them.
Okay.
So I wouldn't be comfortable answering that.
Municipal valuation return?
So now that we've committed taxes, the assessor's come in and done all of his work. We have submitted the attached, you guys all have a 2015 municipal valuation return. If you haven't had time in the past to look at one of these documents, first of all, notice the front that they're actually due on November 1st. The state's constantly reaching out to towns trying to get this information done on time. We've already submitted ours to the state. It basically talks about everything from the, the total, total valuation that you have all the way down to how many properties are in tree growth, how many are in farmland. It breaks down all of your veterans as far as how many, you know, in the various wars, it breaks down your homestead. It's really, it's good information on the Town of Acton as far as where their figures came up to and how much they're reimbursing. So I just wanted to let you know that it had been filed.
Was this filled out by O'Donnell's?
It's filled out through Trio. Trio and O'Donnell's.
Oh, okay.
It's a software, but it's the information from both programs.
And isn't our valuation, our certify ratio, isn't that down? Won't we up higher than that before?
A hundred, no, 110% is what we were at last year.
Oh, we were at last year, okay. Is that all we have to do with that one?
Yep, just information.
Desk from the school?
Kim Oliver sent me an email. Per the school's disposal policy on furniture and other items, when we have excess furniture disposed of, we need to offer that to the school. Okay? school, okay? We currently have 100 individual student desks available, do you think the town can use any of these desks?
Can you?
I personally cannot, no.
Okay. Peter? No? The legs are just, you don't have to leave them down low. Alright, I'd say, if you can ask Bob, but I don't know what they'd use them for, so I'd say no.
Okay.
You say Bob, and then Bob, man?
Yeah, if he wants any desks from the school for the transfer station, if they need stuff, they just take it from stuff people have thrown away, so.
I'll ask him on Saturday, anyway.
Okay. Alright. Any old business, Peter, do you have anything? Do you want to talk to us about anything?
Ethan, Peter Smith, Fire Chief, I'm just thrilled to you that we did have a meeting, trying to go forward with the ordinance, Tuesday night, it went very well. I think it lasted, what, just two hours?
A little over two hours.
We hiccuped on a few things, but we ironed through it, and we're going forward, we're having another meeting, I think it's the 15th, which would be next Tuesday. Still negotiating on the time, it's either between 1830 or 1900.
It's already been posted, so it shouldn't still be, being negotiated. I was given instruction to post it and to notify cable, so that's been done, it's on the website, and that's been scheduled, so.
I'm just passing on when I'm reading through emails, so everybody's on the same page.
Mr. Walsh, did that change from the email you gave me?
It's, well, no, we were batting it around today, so there was a change, one person had a conflict.
Please let me know if it changes, I'm sure our cable people will appreciate that.
That's about it for that.
Alright.
Everything else seems to be going some...
One quick thing, Peter, with, next Thursday, I think, is the public hearing, is that correct?
Seventeenth.
Which we probably won't be ready for, with the changes, or do you want to go through with what we have, and...
I'd weigh on the side of caution that it probably won't be ready.
Then that's a problem.
That's a difference.
But that one doesn't have to have a public hearing, we decide to have one, we can have a public hearing on what's, what's happened now, and then it, then the rest can be brought on the floor, right?
Can I just ask why you won't, why it won't be ready? I mean, you guys wrote the ordinance.
Yep.
So, are there that many changes to make?
There's not a lot of changes, but there's a lot of discussions going on, and I guess I'm a little unfamiliar with a public hearing. A public hearing, in my mind, is to hear from the public, whether we have the ordinance completely done or not, that's, that's my process.
Right, the, the...
If you had it done...
Public hearing is supposed to be to allow them, because there's a draft on file in the clerk's office of everything that's going to be voted on, on October 20th, and no more changes can be made to that until after the public hearing, so they should, so everyone is supposed to be able to come pick up copies of that, and yes, at the, at the public hearing, explain to the selectmen all the proposed changes, they then go back, take it into consideration, and move forward, but with Warren Finance, I mean, we're not going to have a lot of time after that to meet our deadlines, so, I mean, maybe a few days after that for you to make any minor changes.
Is there any way you guys can meet more? After the public hearing?
After the public hearing?
Yeah, once you get the input from the people, if there is any.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and then...
We're being diligent, we're doing what we can to go forward.
So then you can do a schedule to meet it, to get it to the Warren Finance, so we can still do it on that date?
Yep, yes.
Okay, great.
And we can always say that what the changes are, we have to date at the public hearing, too.
Absolutely, yeah, that's my thought process, yeah, yep. I mean, I'm hoping to have it done, but again, time, timeframe's getting tighter.
Yeah, I don't think there's too many things left on there, we got a couple of biggies we had to talk about, but other than that, so.
Also, just want to throw, as far as the receiving assets from the Acton Animal Association, just a real quick thing I want to throw out, there's been an issue in the association building, where the hot water tank, the relief valve had bubbled up over, don't know how long it's been, they've had the insurance company come out, they gave them a quote, or, you know, they surveyed the place, they cut a check, supposed to be coming in shortly, so I'd just like to have those repairs done before we took anything that's going on.
Absolutely.
But they, they are getting monies to repair that, because there was quite a little bit of damage as far as sheet rock, we got it to replace in mold and stuff like that in that building.
So, Bill will get that out and get a contractor in and get it fixed?
He's working on it, yeah.
Okay, great.
I just want to throw that out, stuff like that, but...
That's great.
Anything else?
Well, Elise Miller is here on behalf of Warren Finance, I just want to kind of review the, the timeframe that we, that we agreed on. So, if the public hearing is on Thursday, September 7th, Warren Finance has promised to get it to us by October 6th, so that the board can sign it on October 8th, and we can still get it posted in time, so if the public hearing is on the 17th, I mean, we need to be able to get it to Warren Finance by at least the 22nd of September, that'd give us five or six working days afterwards, and that would give them seven, eight, nine, 10 days to look at it from Warren Finance. So, does that still sound like we can meet that?
I think so, and the advantage of having one of the Warren Finance members on, I mean, he's relaying the information as we're going, so they won't be so far behind, they 'd be caught up to speed as we're going, so I think it'll work.
Speaking of that, to Warren Finance, did we get the letter from Brad yet?
No, Warren Finance hasn't been, they don't know yet, I mean, you could share it with Elise, I'm sure. My understanding, and Elise can, can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the Warren Finance is going to try to, each week now, alternate a member of their committee to appear, to be here at the Board of Selectmen meetings, in case anything comes up, or you have questions, so maybe we could follow up from last week and let Elise know.
Yeah, Larissa brought up some questions about legality and things like that, so we had executive session met with our attorney this, this week, and he is drafting a letter to answer all of those questions for you, okay? We could not go to MMA, because we'd already been to our lawyers, and we were already happy with it, but because you guys wanted it in writing, we had to have him do it. Last time we went to MMA, after we went to our attorneys, they weren't very happy, so we had the attorney that gave the Board of Selectmen the advice, is going to answer your questions, okay? So, as soon as we get that, we'll get a copy, tell everybody on Warren Finance. Alright, anything else for old business? No? Anybody else have anything that they want to talk about? No?
Can I, maybe Mr. Vannella wants to touch base on the Planning Board thoughts regarding the...
Oh, yeah, about the Little Red Schoolhouse, they're not going to put it forward?
You mean hysterical, what do you ever use?
Historical, yes.
That's it. Well, there's a public hearing next Thursday, correct?
Right.
Seven o'clock?
Right.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a strange thing, they think it's your, because it's a zoning issue, the Planning Board needs to bring it forward. And back in the day, the Planning Board were presented as, you know, this is a zoning change, explain it to the public, get feedback from the public, go back, commiserate. Because they think it's coming from a separate group, they haven't really discussed it too much, as far as I've seen.
Yeah.
So, I think it's going to be a, a big awakening for everybody next Thursday.
Well, and...
They don't know if, if you want to present it, or if you're going to have the man who wrote it present it.
The question, the question that came to me, the chair of, of the Planning Board came to me, as did Code Enforcement, and his question was, who is moving this question, who is moving this question forward from the zoning, to the Planning Board? We all know that based on ordinance, any amendment to this ordinance, the zoning ordinance, may be adopted by majority vote at a special or regular town meeting. A proposal for amendment must be initiated by a majority vote of the Planning Board, so that's not the case. The Board of Selectmen, an individual through the request of a Planning Board with a majority vote, or a written petition of number of voters equal to 10%. In this case, even though they turned in petitions, because the wording has changed so much, it is not the petitioner's question anymore. The Board of Selectmen are moving this forward to the Planning Board and, and instructing you to have a public hearing, as they've agreed to put it on their warrant, so it, it's being moved forward by the Board.
Alright, fine.
And we're trying to avoid them coming in and calling their own pub, town meeting with their petition, which they can, and then we have to tell them, even if the town votes it in, with the, with the petition, the way they wrote it, then we have to tell them, no, we can't do that, and tell Kenny that he can't give him a building permit. So, the solution to that was Joe Lankowski volunteered, as you know, you were here, to, to write this up, and they can't present it. I mean, I'm sure if you turn it down, the selectmen turn it down, they can go out and get another petition signed. How many people were on that?
How many were on the original?
Yeah, 180 or something.
I didn't have to look.
But the petitioners have signed off on Lankowski's, uh...
They agree, they agree.
Well, no, that's right.
No, 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 no. The people that circulated the petition might have signed off, but the 200-plus signatures that I have verified, we cannot say that they are in favor of that.
No, I get that, and this isn't really about...
It has nothing to do with the petition.
Little Red Schoolhouse, this is about the, setting up a historical, what's the word?
Structure.
No, 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 an historical, uh... No, a way out of something, like a, like a backdoor deal, what do you call this? Come on, anybody out there in cable land, quick, get on the phone! Anyway, I can't think of the word, but it, it's a way for, to have historical buildings opt out of all the zoning, uh...
Exceptions.
Pardon me?
Exceptions.
That's it?
Exceptions.
Yes, so, that's what it is.
I just wanted to see you stutter.
Yeah, I don't care. So, the, the, the Planning Board is going to present it, though, are you guys going to speak on it, or is Lankowski going to explain it to the crowd?
Well, I wanted Joe Lankowski to do it, because he wrote it, but he's not available that night, so I'll just read it, and then everybody can talk about it, because I wasn't involved in it, because it was citizens and Joe Lankowski that, that wrote this, so...
Well, maybe the chair, the Planning Board might want to do it.
If he just reads what it is, and then lets the public hearing go, because none of us were there to, to hear the conversations, and...
I guess, I hate to even say this, but the more that I read this amendment, I mean, I want to make sure that the full Board of Selectmen, whether it's with a motion or without a motion, because it, when it talks about the Planning Board, it says a majority vote of the Planning Board, that the Board of Selectmen understand that this is your article, and you're moving it forward, because if not, we're not going to meet the criteria, or even get it on the warrant.
Well, we did, we did vote to move it forward to the Planning Board to have a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a few weeks ago.
Right.
Or almost even maybe last month.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
Although there's, you know, there, there are questions about it, and I know Code Enforcement has some questions about it, and some of the Planning Board members may. So, it may not, after the public hearing, it may not look, it may not end up looking like it does now, but, so where it goes.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure, as always, yes, sir!
Alright, a motion to go into executive session, unless you have something else?
Yes, sir.
I move we go into executive session.
Seconded.
Pursuant to?
Oh, pursuant to Title 1, Section 405, Paragraph 6A.
Seconded.
All in favor? We'll be back.
They have to notify the public why they're going in, if you decide you wanted to go, in case you wanted to go look up that statue, you'd know.
Okay, a motion to come out of executive session?
I move we come out of the executive session.
Seconded.
All in favor? Alright, do we have any other business?
I have just one more thing before the announcements, that I was hoping that we could discuss, or I could discuss with you, and maybe bring you more information next week. As you know, we have a position open for an assistant that we, at this point, have not been able to fill. We do have two individuals that we'll be interviewing on Friday, but one of the reasons I feel like we're really struggling to fill these positions is because of all of the surrounding towns' pay and benefits, and what they offer, and, you know, our ad just can't compete to the surrounding towns, so I'm hoping to come back to you with some proposed hourly rate increases, for some of the employees to make up for some of the lack of benefits that, that Acton offers, and hopefully keep some of the employees that we have longer, and maybe draw in a new crowd for the new position.
Okay.
So, is that something that you would consider? Me presenting, I mean, I've got rough numbers, which I, I know I emailed, or will email, but can we go through it next week?
Okay.
I think most definitely.
Okay.
Alright.
And then, in the meantime, we're looking for some support for one or two employees above and beyond their regular hours, to work five to eight hours a week, to try to catch up.
Motion?
I'll make a motion for up to eight hours, for the secretary's support, and up to $25 an hour, as you need, see fit.
Okay.
Until we can get someone hired to help get caught up, give us more time.
Is that it?
Yep.
I second that.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Alright, we've got two announcements.
Yeah, I left the old ones, do yourself your agenda, I left the old ones on there, didn't know if you wanted to reiterate.
Which ones?
Public hearing for the 17th.
Oh, okay.
We've had a couple of calls on it, so we have it posted for 6 o'clock, because we need to do the fire and rescue and solid waste.
Right.
The zoning, remember, based on the ordinance, can't start before 7, if you happen to be done before then.
Okay, public hearing, September 17th, for the fire and rescue ordinance, the transfer of station ordinance, and the zoning ordinance. Special town meeting is on Tuesday, October 20th, 2015, and that will be at the Acton School.
Yep, we got confirmation today that it's available, I just have to fill out the documentation, send it back, 7 o'clock.
Okay. Kite Day at Hobbs Farm, who's got that?
Bill.
Bill?
Come fly a kite. Three Rivers Land Trust, September 20th, 2015. Hobbs Farm, 651 Fox's Ridge Road, Acton, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Bring a picnic and kites, we will also have some to share. Outdoor fun, amazing demonstrations, refreshments. For information, I guess you go to info@threerlt.org.
Yep, okay, received a email today, an invitation from Linda Shire, at the Acton Wakefield, Acton Wakefield Watershed Alliance, says you're invited, AWWA Annual Meeting, September 17th, at 1:00 PM. Please join AWWA Board of Directors in the first-floor conference room at the Wakefield Town Hall, it's 2 High Street in Sanbornville, to talk about AWWA's past year of protecting our lakes, and what we have planned for the future. See how your donations are making a difference, and thank your friends and neighbors who have volunteered time to help keep our lakes clean. This is an opportunity to learn more about what we do, get involved, and get a better understanding of why AWWA is so critical to our region. All is welcome. Once again, that's September 17th, at 1:00, at the Wakefield Town Hall, which is 2 High Street in Sanbornville.
Anybody have anything else? Alright, Bill, motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded.
Did, did you have something? Okay, all in favor?
What's adjourned, at what time, 6:11?
I need that phone number.
It's in my office.